Good evening, I'll call to order the July 22nd, 2019 workshop of the Arvada City Council. Kristin Resherfield will do the role.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Potem Mariott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Bogoff.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Okay, tonight we have two workshops. For those who haven't been with us before, workshops are an opportunity for staff and council to have a discussion. This is not a public hearing tonight, and, but we will, as particularly the waste hauling issue moves forward, we will indeed have a public hearing to discuss how we're going to move forward. So with that, Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're going to start with our consultant, Katie will present the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thanks for having me back. Kate Bailey with EcoCycle. I've been helping staff on the waste hauling and recycling effort, and so we're going to give you a fairly high-level overview of where we are with the process at this point and some, hopefully, you can give us some direction on next steps moving forward. Just as a quick background on where we've been in the process, this is something that was identified in the council retreat. This is all information that has presented, been presented before, but we did go out for RFP in May, and we are coming back now. The RFPs were received, and so we're coming back with some of those results. We have talked also about why we're moving forward with this system, improving recycling, taking trucks off the road, additional safety, lower air pollution, just a little bit more background on why we're covering this. And we did see those values reflected in the community survey, where we saw recycling and taking trucks off the road really stand out as the reason citizens are supportive of this effort and why the city's looking at it in detail. And not at all to get into detail, but we are moving forward on our timeline. Still a lot of work to go in terms of the implementation process that might come forward, but at this point, we're presenting proposals and looking for next steps moving forward. So with that, I'm going to give a brief overview of the RFP responses that were received. And just to refresh everyone's memory, we did go out looking for a couple-
Hold on, Ms. Ford, did you have a question?
I did.
Go ahead.
Katie, I wanted to ask you, on the four, there were four haulers that were, that came to the questions. I wanted to find out if they were the same haulers that responded to the RFP, who came when we solicited input from the haulers?
Yes, so city asked for input on, from all the haulers. Four haulers attended meeting with city staff. They were the four haulers that didn't follow up through with bids. So four, four proposals were received. They were all quality bids. They were all, haulers are able to provide all of the services moving forward, and we're just going to kind of recap some of the pros and cons in different decisions. Council asked for a lot of options to explore, so we walk through some of those. So as a basic service package, we were talking about weekly trash. We looked at different options around the sizes of the trash bins. We looked at bi-weekly recycling for all residents and optional composting program. City wanted to bring back bulky waste collection, as that was popular with residents. We gave haulers some flexibility in what that looks like, and we also talked about having very low subscription fees, so residents who just wanted the bulky waste option could essentially get just that and essentially opt out of the program, if you will. We had talked about customer service being provided by the hauler. Haulers had the option to subcontract. The total contract term would be seven years, and we looked at about 32,000 households in the overall proposal. We looked at a combination of districts versus citywide, and we also looked at options for carts and billing. So we put together a pretty comprehensive proposal, and haulers were very responsive with all of those details coming back to us. So as I said, four haulers responded. They are able to provide all of the services. We heard from them six to eight, maybe 10 months lead time to get the trucks and the drivers up and running. And there's a range of prices for all of the services. We will not be presenting specific price information. Everything will be presented in general, because it is subject to contract negotiations and things like that. But we'll give you a short overview of what that pricing did look like. And pricing was an important part of the citizen's survey. We heard that pricing was definitely an important thing for council to consider. That's what residents like best about their current hauler. But we did also survey residents on what they, how they wanted the city to choose the right service provider, and what we heard was cost was important, but services provided was the recycling, bulky item, composting was important. The quality of the service was a big deal with residents, as was the customer service. So there were basically four criteria that residents identified as good ways to evaluate how to move forward with their preferred vendor. So with that, we're going to jump a little bit into pricing. We got a fairly complicated price sheet back, given all the different options that we looked at. And so what this is, is just a brief overview. We created a couple basic scenarios of what this might look like at the household level. And so I'll walk through this. So on the first line is your, your lowest rate, your household that is going to receive bulky item collection, but no other trash or recycling service. They're going to contract with their own hauler. And so those rates were variable, anywhere from $2 to $11. Part of that is because we asked for a lot of options around bulky item collection, so we're not exactly comparing apples to apples, and we can talk more about that later. Next level of service would be a household that wants just a small trash container. They do get recycling included with that. They'd also get the bulky item collection. They'd be in the ballpark of $11 to $18 per month. The majority of households would fall into that third line, that 64-gallon trash cart, a 96-gallon recycling cart. They would also get the bulky item collection. We're in the ballpark of $15 to $24 a month. And then you can see the prices for the larger trash cart, again with recycling and bulky item. And then residents who wanted the composting service. There was a lot of variability in the composting rates, so you see a pretty big range for prices for residents moving forward. But this is what it might look like, you know, when residents are putting together their, their package of services that they want. They're going to be somewhere in this ballpark. This is, of course, highly variable depending on size of your carts and things like this. And I also want to note that this includes the cost of collection services. It also includes the cost to purchase the carts. It does not include any charges for billing. That's something we'll talk about in a little bit.
Mr. Mariott's got a question.
So I have a question for you. With these pricing rates, proposed pricing rates, they're so broad here on this scale. It looks to, on this screen, it looks to me like they straddle the both cheaper than people are paying now and more expensive than people are paying now. How, how is a citizen who may or may not be voting on this, or as council people, you know, how, how, how do we, with cost being the most important thing on your screen there, how, how do, how do we evaluate that? Because it might be cheaper, it might be the same, might be more expensive. It seems like we're not getting much to go on here.
Right. So at this point, we're presenting just a range of, of prices to keep it proprietary, so there is a challenge in that. These are prices that would be subject to final negotiations. They're basically here to just give you a flavor of what came back. The other challenge is, is the city does not have great data, really, at all on what residents are currently paying. So we can't say across the board, everyone is paying this. So, so we are a little limited in that data. What we do see in, in most communities moving forward is that some residents save money, some residents come out the same. It may increase for some residents. It depends a lot on the type of service that you have, the additional services you want to subscribe to. That's one of the challenges. There's also moving parts to this puzzle.
Okay. So at this point, anyway, we don't have any way of saying that this saves us money or not. We don't know. The one thing I don't see on here is, because this is kind of a à la carte, a menu, choose what you want, there's not an option on here that's trash only. Is there a reason for that? And is, is that, is that just an off-the-table, there's no option for trash only?
At this point, we were looking at providing, recycling is included with all trash services. It's just part of the base rate. So there is no option for trash only. You get the recycling cart. Whether you want to use it or not is up to your discretion.
Okay. Thank you.
Same with the bulky item collection. It would be provided either way, up to your use. So moving forward, customer service was something we heard loud and clear from residents as well as council as an important attribute. Several of the haulers were able to offer a, a local call center, so there would be someone that residents could call directly in our local area to be able to respond to any missed pickups, complaints, things like that. The haulers talked about several different protocols for responding to weather, how to notify customers about missed pickups. And there are a lot of additional services in terms of apps, in terms of how you could be notified about your pickup, how you could sample education materials we received, and importantly as well, implementation plans, what it would look like to roll this out into the community.
That would be useful. I unfortunately look to one of my neighbors, and if he's got both of his cans out, I put both of my cans out. But then he's usually wrong, so I have to haul back my recycle, which is usually more, always more full than my other one, but.
Right. So they've got great apps that, yeah.
But I get good exercise, so it's fine.
So the next couple slides talk about some of the choices that, we're looking for some direction on council. We asked a number of different options in the pricing, which made it a little complicated, and, and so we wanted some feedback, wanted to present you with what we found and some feedback for moving forward. One of the first issues is whether the, to divide the city into districts or zones, or to bid out the entire city as one entity. So we asked haulers for pricing on both, and what we found was there was not a large cost difference in between the districts and the citywide. So there was not, citywide service often comes with economies of scale. Haulers able to provide the entire city. We did not necessarily see that. Two of the four haulers provided the same price across citywide and across the districts. So no, no big price difference there. We also were a little bit surprised to see that all three districts came back as the same price. So we had divided the city into three zones, about equal size, but knowing that some areas in the west of town may have more, less density, might be more expensive to service, other areas might have more alleys. But either way, that, so that, all the haulers bid all of the districts on the same price. In terms of how to move forward with districts or citywide, there is several things to consider. One is that there's additional staff time to manage districts. There has to be, you have two different vendors, so you're, or potentially three different vendors, so you're looking at having to normalize those prices. You're looking at different methods of customer service, different point people. So districts does come with an additional staff burden. So at this point, staff recommendation is to look at contracting for, with one hauler for citywide services.
Mr. Jones, you're first.
So with the number of additional staff, so later on in the presentation, it talks about the number of staff. I'm assuming that's for a citywide solution?
That is for billing specifically.
Okay. So what is it that, what would increase from a staff perspective if, if all we're doing is billing, and the customer service is being handled by the hauler? What would the additional staff need to be doing?
So at this point, so first staff would need to negotiate with two different vendors, potentially three different vendors to come to one price. So you wouldn't, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily want three different prices for three different districts if you went with three different vendors. So there's coming together on what is the one price that everyone receives. You would have, customer service, you're right, would be handled by the haulers, but staff would be maintaining that, getting reports back. It would be a little bit more confusing for the community to have three different point people. That's something to consider. Rolling out the program would also be more complicated at the district level, just in terms of how everybody's getting pickups, things like that. When is your bulky item collection? So I think there is, we didn't quantify what that impact might be on staff, but that's what we've heard from other communities, is there is a little bit more staff management on that side of things.
Okay.
Mr. Mariott.
So that brings up a, a question. So there seems to be some negatives from having districts, but there's got to be some positives, too. What would those be?
Generally, the positives are seen as having more haulers in the community. So you're giving business to potentially three haulers instead of one. I will say that from a choice perspective, it does not give residents more choice. You, you're in District A, you get hauler A, you don't get to choose whether you have hauler B or C. So it doesn't necessarily help with that issue. A lot of communities also look at it as a way to incentivize the smaller haulers, the, the more local haulers to participate. Sometimes cities will carve out a smaller district that might be something someone local can service. We did not have much input from the smaller haulers, and the market consolidation we're seeing in the industry suggests smaller haulers are not in this game to get these kinds of contracts. Even at a district level, it's, it's many times larger than what they service. So we did not necess, we did not hear from council that, that carving out a niche for the small haulers was important, but that was an opportunity that could have been had under the district approach.
Okay. So there's one thing on this slide that brings up a question. It says additional staff time to manage costs. So regardless of whether we have districts or whether it's one hauler for the whole city, there's some cost to the city to, to enter into this type of, of an arrangement, correct?
So there's staff time to negotiate the contract. Every year, the contract is up for renewal. If there's issues, the more haulers you're dealing with, the more staff time there is to manage, okay, you missed this many pickups.
But even if it's one hauler for the whole city, there's staff time upfront to, to negotiate the contracts and conceptualize the, the program and put the program in place. But there's ongoing costs to, to the city and staff time, if nothing else, correct?
Sure. I would say staff is overseeing the program. They're not directly managing it.
Okay. Do we have any, from, from other experiences in other cities, any kind of a quantification of what that staff time is? Is it X amount of hours per month or year, season, or anything like that?
No, I haven't looked at that.
Okay. And, and within that last rack of pricing that you gave us, was there anything in those prices that was a, some type of a franchise fee or franchise charge that the hauler or haulers, depending on how it goes, would pay to the city to offset the cost to the city for this program?
No. We see that commonly in California, where communities collect a franchise fee as part of their agreement, but that is not the case in this proposal. And there's no precedent for that in Colorado.
Okay. Do we know, do we have any idea from places that do? You know, we collect a franchise fee from XL, for instance, for operating within our right-of-ways. We collect a franchise fee from Comcast and CenturyLink for operating within our, our right-of-ways. And some places do it with trash haulers for the costs that the city incurs to, to manage a program like this. For the places that do charge that, do we have any idea what kind of charges that amounts to? Is it a dollar an address a year, a dollar an address a month? $5 a month?
There are some cities in Colorado with a contract that do charge an administrative fee that does cover some of their billing and may cover some additional staff time as well. I'm not sure exactly how that is split, so we can look at that for sure.
Okay. Do we have an idea what, any idea, just quantify what that, how much that might be?
They range. They're anywhere from, you know, they're, they're 50 cents in some communities, and some communities are a couple dollars, but it also goes to fund a drop-off center and some other services as well. So it, it's hard to compare apples to apples.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
In some of these services, do any of them white label themselves? Like when they call into a customer service, we have, say, we have three trash haulers, so that we don't get our constituents in a point where they don't know who is who. Did, did any of these contract RFPs talk about white labeling? In other words, the answer to the phone is Arvada?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we specifically said customer service would be provided by the hauler. They did offer webpages specifically for the city, but it was understood that you are the service provider, so you would answer as, you know, hauler A.
Okay. And then when it said slight savings from two haulers, because of your numbers, and I know you can't go into great detail, I'm assuming those two haulers were probably on the lower side of your scale?
So those, those haul, so that bullet means that in two of the four bids, there was a slight savings in going with a citywide hauler instead of districts.
So let me reword that, because I said it wrong. So the higher end of your scale were those ones that lowered their price? I'm just curious how they bucketed into it. So in other words, if the first one said, hey, I give you 96 trash, 96 gallon recycle, it's 20 bucks to 33, the 20 buck hauler, I would think, probably didn't adjust, because they came in low already. And did the $33 hauler come in lower, and they adjusted for volume?
So, so these prices are just looking at citywide. These are not considering district.
Oh, they're not by district?
No. So it's just looking at the citywide spread. If we looked at district, it would be slightly different, but we're talking about, you know, just, you know, 30, 50 cents. It was fairly negligible on the rates.
And right now, this is no billing. So, I mean, a couple things. I think running a program, I would assume it's not heavy cost unless we are doing the billing. I think billing adds a different layer. But we haven't teased that out yet.
We'll get to billing in a second.
Then I'll wait till then. Thanks.
Lots of options to explore. Okay, so another option we looked at was the size of the trash cart, whether the city should provide small, medium, and large trash carts, or we should go with one standard large trash cart. So we asked haulers to provide pricing on both scenarios. The pros of going with a small, medium, and large system is it is a proven strategy nationwide to help increase recycling. If people have a smaller trash bin, they're more conscious of what they are throwing away, and they're more likely to use their recycling bin. It also allows residents to have a little bit more control over their costs, and if they are a low-income or a senior household and don't produce a lot of trash, they can go with the smaller trash cart size and save some money. We also saw that those rates were generally cheaper when we looked at the community-wide costs compared to a single bin. On the pros of going with just a single-sized bin, it certainly simplifies the billing. Everyone has the same standard services. But with what we saw in the pricing and what we see as the pros and cons, staff would recommend going with a, a volume-based rate structure.
Mr. Jones, you're first.
So on the proven strategy to increase recycling, so in the community that I live in, we have, it's an HOA, and so we have one trash truck and one recycling truck, and everybody's provided with a 96-gallon bin for both. My experience has been, in talking with my neighbors, is that they're already pretty conscious around recycling, and so having the larger trash bin doesn't necessarily encourage them to recycle more. They're just recycling more, and their trash bin is emptier. But I know that there are some households that opt, they contact the hauler and opt for a smaller trash bin, just for space requirements. And there are some who ask for two recycling bins. So I don't know, I don't know why a smaller bin would encourage somebody to do something different when, if they had the larger bin. I'm just looking kind of a few more slides ahead on how do you manage all those carts and the different sizes of carts, and why wouldn't we just do, like the HOAs are doing, there's one cart for everybody. If you want a difference, then you contact the hauler and you get something different, based on your garage needs or whatever it may be.
Sure.
So I just don't know, when you say there's a, it's a proven strategy, I question that a little bit. I think that people are recycling more and more anyway. And I don't know, I just, I don't know if that, if I believe that there's a proven strategy in giving them a smaller trash. I think it's just you're forcing them to, to do something that maybe they wouldn't do otherwise.
So what we see statistically across the board is communities that have the, the small, medium, and large trash produce less waste per capita than communities that have one large, single trash can. And we see that there's states, entire states that have this type of system in place. So there's a lot of data out there that supports residents are producing less trash per person with these options. And part of it is, it's not just recycling. So that's a little bit of an oversimplification. So with a smaller trash cart, you are more aware of your tree branches or your grass clippings and go, oh, I gotta bring these to the drop-off center. I can't cram them in my cart anymore. Or more likely to donate things to Salvation Army or a thrift store, because again, I can't just sort of shove it into the trash cart. So there are some behavior modifications that we see both in recycling, composting, and reducing waste overall with these types of systems. So it's, it's kind of a combination of factors, but the, the data's pretty strong on it being an effective approach. So communities that, that just do nothing else but change to small, medium, and large trash carts still see their trash generation go down.
Yeah. And you would know better. You're, you've studied this a lot more than I do. And I can appreciate that. I just, you know, I look, the thing that helps me do it is that I've got this can and this can, and they do different things, and, and that's what they pick up. And so, but fortunately, our trash company also allows us to have two extra bags if you've got that much trash. So, yeah, I just, it's, you know, I'm, and maybe I'm biased on the 96-gallon cart, just because that's what I'm used to. So I guess, I'm just still trying to understand the theories around the sizes of carts and how people react behaviorally to those.
I will say that we did include options for residents who wanted an extra 96-gallon. That's also always an option, as well as if you did have additional trash from time to time, what would be your option for that moving forward? So.
So like if, if, if I had one week, let's just say one week.
Like Christmas.
Like, yeah. Where you have a bunch of stuff. Is that, was that priced into it? And I know that there's extra, like bulk items, but to have, could you call for extra service that week where you've got stuff? Because I know, I think I can, we can call our provider today and let them know ahead of time that we've got some extra stuff, and they'll pick it up. They charge us for that, but it's a kind of a one-off scenario. Was that in, was that in the RFP at all?
Yeah, we looked at overflow trash charges, is what we called that. So that's part of the big pricing matrix that we have.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mariott.
Thank you. I have a question on this slide. You have a bullet point that just says cheaper. So are you saying that it's, that the haulers bid a cheaper price if it's the three different sizes of cans, that it's less expensive than if it's all just one size?
So we did a, an analysis that we didn't include in this presentation, but we, we went through the scenario before of the different households at the different rates. Who opts out? Who has a small trash can, medium, large trash can? What we did was we put some numbers to, okay, how many people in the community do we think is going, are going to use that different size, versus what do we think those rates are going to be? So what is the total monthly community cost, right? So not just what is the cost for a one household, but what does this look like across the entire community? To try to tease out, when you look at the price sheet and you see small, medium, and large, it's kind of hard to discern which hauler is giving you the best deal. So we tried to look at the aggregate community cost, and that's where we saw that the volume-based pricing came in at a lower total community price tag than the largest trash cart size.
And do you have any, any kind of an idea about how, how much? Was it 5% cheaper, 10% cheaper?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but that's something we could share.
Okay. And then I'm more concerned about for the individual who, who, you know, this now becomes the way they get their trash. Is it cheaper for them to have this type of a plan, or is it cheaper for them to have the, the type of, for the city to adopt a plan where there's, as Mr. Jones said, there's just one, one trash can, one recycle can, and you go forward? What's cheaper for the, for the individual?
So cheaper for the resident would be the option to choose a 32-gallon can, if that's what suits their needs. That was cheaper than everyone getting a 96-gallon.
But if you choose the 96-gallon, is that more expensive than if everybody gets a 96-gallon?
I don't remember, and it may depend on the hauler as well.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
This, I had a meet and greet the other night, and I had a constituent who had a situation where they had a, a large piece of property, and currently they're, because they're not composting, they're throwing out their green matter, and they're able to throw out a, a large amount with their trash. And I'm wondering about that type of person who lives, if composting is not offered right away, you know, what would be the solution for someone like that who has a lot of green waste to get rid of, you know, where a 32-gallon probably wouldn't do it for them? What, what would be the option for them?
Sure. I think composting would be an option. We would look at rolling that out at the same time, and it would be an optional service for, for people just like that who have those larger, you know, who have those yards and have, have that kind of need. It would be weekly service, so it should be able to meet their, their needs most of the year. So I would think that would be the preferred course of action, and it is included in the, in the service package. And it is included in the, in the service package, so I'm not sure why there would need to be a delay in providing it.
Well, I, 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 I guess because I wasn't sure if that was discussed in the RFP, the composting, or if that was a service that, you know, was thought that we would provide later on, or I've, I've heard various things. I guess I'm a little confused about one thing. Um, you know, you mentioned that we, you really don't get any much data. But what about, what about these cities, though? I'm, I would imagine that the cities that have rolled out a single hauler system would know offhand if, you know, if, um, residents were paying more for, uh, their services, their waste hauling services. Um, do we have any information on that? Because we're, you know, we're looking at this as an important aspect of why we would wanna go to a single hauler, is to reduce costs, especially for people that are not in an HOA currently. And, um, you know, I would imagine that Lafayette and Loveland and other cities that have rolled out single hauler would know at some point that whether people are paying more or less for the services.
So, it's a bit surprising how much cities lack data on trash, right? It's not like electricity use where we have this great meter, um, and we can measure these things, and there's one, one company. So, in situations like Lafayette, they rolled out a single hauler contract in two thousand and seven, I believe it was. They did not know all the pricing from all the haulers. They did not have any data on what was being recycled or thrown away at the time. So, they were not able to say conclusively afterwards, you know, we know that we are, our recycling rate increased by X. They were able to anecdotally say that we think most residents either saved money or are paying the equivalent amount and getting more services, right? Because recycling was now included for all residents. They had some bulky item collection, you know. So, so, again, the services are changing, not just the cost. Uh, I will say that it's very rare to see a type of program like this where every resident saves money, right? And we, usually what we see is there's some split where some to most residents save money or come out even, and then there's a small percentage of residents who will pay more, especially with the type of volume-based pricing where that, that bigger trash cart is priced a little bit higher. But, again, those residents maybe who right now have ninety-six gallon trash will then have a recycling cart, they'll then have the bulky item collection, they'll have fewer trucks on the road, they'll have less noise pollution. We're working toward a more sustainable city, so they have lots of benefits that they're getting as well.
Thanks.
Mr. Fiverr.
So, I wanna go opposite of David Jones's comments. You know, I've had some phone calls in regards to somebody who just wants to put their trash bag out. It's one trash bag. Or, another reason, um, I've heard is elderly can't wheel down the ninety-six gallon. Um, so, we have to be, you know, concerned when we're trying to create this inclusivity with this, that they should have the option to do, obviously, thirty-two, or can they put a bag out? Was that brought up in the RFP about just putting a single bag on the curb versus a bin?
I will say that in the survey, we had residents who were like, "Why don't we do every other week trash?" You know, and, and recycling weekly. So, yeah, there are a lot of people who use very little trash. One of the challenges with the carts is that you're moving toward automated trucks. Uh, safer for trash companies to not have the driver get out of the truck. So, the, the carts provide more safety. It then does limit the ability to just put out a single bag. Um, so, at this point, we were just looking at a cart-based system.
Okay, thanks.
So, on to carts, uh, as another topic. So, haulers were asked to provide pricing on whether they purchased the carts, the trash recycling and optional composting carts. And the city was also looking at whether or not the city purchased those carts. So, we asked haulers for the pricing that would be part of the monthly billing. What we saw is large variations in the pricing for purchasing carts, as much as two-dollar variations per month, depending on the size of the cart. Um, so, the range of numbers is provided up there. We do think there are some benefits to the city purchasing the carts. The first is that these carts have a ten-year warranty. So, it allows the city to, um, recoup those costs over a ten-year period. Right now, the way the contract is structured, the haulers are essentially only guaranteed the contract for three years, even though there are two, two-year rollovers. So, the haulers are looking at this from a perspective of they need to make their money back on the carts within three years. So, they're charging a, a higher, more quickly, um, they're getting their money back faster than the city would need to. So, the city could provide smaller incre- the city could charge less over a longer period of time, essentially, and do it a little bit cheaper than the haulers. There's also the added advantage on the recycling carts. There's a number of grant programs that potentially provide funding specifically to municipalities to buy recycling carts, so that would give the city an advantage. Those programs also come with education funding to help you roll out the programs. And there's, uh, also the ability potentially for the city to look at lower financing for the costs. The haulers are providing the maintenance and the storage and inventory of the carts that was included in the initial pricing. So, this is just looking at the, the actual purchase of the bins. Um, so, given the, the potential benefits of the city purchasing the bins, the staff recommendation is to move forward and look at what those options might be and be able to come back with an actual number of what it would cost for the city to purchase the bins, so we could do an apples-to-apples comparison.
Do the prices that you've shown on Slide twelve, the, um, household rates include the carts?
Those do include the carts.
Okay, provided by the provider.
Provided by the haulers.
Thank you.
And it does include the cost to maintain and service the carts as well.
That answered your question, Mr. Marriott. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, Mayor.
I'm sorry, David, did you?
Just, yeah, you, you asked one of my questions, but my second question is, um, so, our, our hauler in our neighborhood, they actually, because out where we live, it gets a little windy, um, we have a special cart that has a locking lid. Um, and were any of those kinds of options talked about from a cart perspective? Because that really does help cut down on blowing trash. Um, so, it's something that they did for our community, which was awesome, and it came at the request of the community. Did any of the haulers talk about locking lids? They're not locking, but they just latch.
Yeah, nobody talked about that, and we didn't hear that in the survey, so it was not something that we had included.
Okay.
But I know haulers are able to accommodate bare-resistant lid, you know, containers in certain communities, so that might be something we can explore moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Mr. Marriott.
Hey, thank you. I do have a question when it comes to, to carts, either the city owning them or the haulers owning them. You mentioned that the, if the city owns them, the haulers still have the responsibility of fixing, replacing. And you mentioned they have a ten-year warranty, which means if they get broken or torn up, in ten years, the wheels come off missing, the manufacturer just replaces them for, for ten years. Um, and based on the preliminary numbers, and I guess you'll come back to us with the exact numbers that, that you, um, got us. I think the number we had seen before was about five million bucks or something like that upfront for us to buy them all. And then, um, and then, of course, that wouldn't be figured into the hauler's price. We would do that. Uh, how would we get reimbursed for that? Again, is that a place for a franchise fee or a, something from the haulers? Or, or, or is that a spot where cities just subsidize everybody's trash to the tune of five million bucks upfront? Or, what, what do you do with that?
So, the city, yeah, that's a good question. So, the cities that buy the carts then charge residents a small fee every month to pay back that purchase.
And how do they do that?
That is, uh, tacked onto the billing. So, in Lafayette, for example, you get a bill. It has the cost to provide service, it has the cost for the carts, and then it has the cost for the city billing.
And so, that's, that's assuming that the city bills for the, for the trash service. If the hauler bills for the trash service, but the city owns the carts?
We'd have to look at that.
You'd have to look at it, okay, thank you.
So, on to billing, another one of our options to explore. So, haulers were asked to provide billing options. They looked at monthly, bimonthly, and quarterly. We saw a range of options. We also asked city staff to provide an estimate on what that would cost for the city to add the waste bill to the bimonthly water bill. Um, so, city staff calculated that at a dollar thirty-five every other month. That includes two FTE, software upgrades. It also includes some money for payment processing fees, what the charges we get on credit card fees. Um, and, and staff estimated there would be definitely a, a lag time in getting this up and running, needing a new software package, and that's part of, kind of a larger discussion around billing. Um, but the city did, staff did feel pretty confident that they could do the billing, that they could do it efficiently, and the recommendation would be to move forward with city providing billing.
Okay, Ms. Marriott.
Hey, so, uh, let me ask you this. Looks like the price is the same, whether the haulers do it or whether the city does it, right? The haulers is a dollar-ten to a ba- dollar-fifty, the city's a dollar-thirty-five. That's kind of right smack in the middle between there. So, there doesn't appear to be any price difference. So, why would the recommendation be that the city does it?
I mean, again, it's one of those things that we would get into. With final negotiations throughout a contract and looking at what is gonna be the best option. Something like who bills for the carts may be one of the options. Um, but, yeah, it's not, it's not hugely different. It depended on the hauler. It depends on if you're doing monthly or bimonthly or quarterly billing, what the cost would end up being. Um, but at this point, that was kind of the recommendation, looking at the overall costs.
So, it, it, I, I guess if, if whatever the going, the next step going forward is, I guess I would like to see, see those two things either, either broken out, see it, see it either way. Because, I mean, I can see the, the, on one hand, the city does have an, an enormous hammer to hit people with, which is your water service. That if you don't pay your bill that contains your water, your sewer, your storm, and your trash, that we turn your water off, and it's hard to exist very long without that. So, it's quite a good encouragement to pay. So, I can see that. But there's some value in that to the haulers, who then have delinquent accounts that they don't ever have to, have to face. And so, there's gotta be a pricing difference for that. There's a difference in operation and a difference in that. And so, I would expect that there has to be a price difference for that. And if there's not a price difference from that, I don't know why we would wanna have the city be the cop for the hauler for no reason. Um, I don't think that puts the city in a very good place. So, um, as we go forward, I think we need to continue that. I wouldn't be comfortable with the next step being that we're just gonna default to the city does the billing. I think we need to look at that critically, and if we're gonna do the billing, we better get something for it. There better be a reason why we do it, not that we just do it because. So, anyway, my, my two cents.
Mr. Fiverr.
So, there's not any synergies gained with our existing water billing? You'd think there'd be some synergies. We bill every house. The paper goes out, the envelope goes out.
You know, I think it's something we have to look a little bit more at. Uh, I think the other reason why we recommended the city providing billing is that we thought there might be, uh, you know, there, there might be a feeling on the part of the residents of better accountability as well. I think we could do a comparison and, and show you that information at some point in the future.
Yeah, I, I, I think if we can dig a little deeper on our side, because I think that we already kind of have a system. I'm looking to, over your head, to Brian, but you would think that some of that's there. Hardware, software, I just didn't catch the hardware part. I didn't know you need more hardware to do it. Brian's not listening to me. Oh, it's not?
I'm, I'm listening, but it would be better answered by Jason or Tim Solomon.
Oh, sorry, all right.
Okay, so, we do have billing software for water, but not for trash. That's a different module that we would have to purchase. So, and then just the hardware that we have to replace with other machines that we have to buy for the two additional staff.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, those are the options that we considered in the RFP. We wanted to also discuss further public comment and further public involvement. The city has done a, a survey this spring. We looked at what was important to residents in terms of services. Um, but there are differently, a few different ways we could further engage the public on this issue, um, depending on, on how council decides they wanna move forward. Uh, one option would be to, you know, ask residents more detail about what you want for bulky item collection or, or composting, sort of get into some more details to help us negotiate a, a final package with the haulers. Um, and then the other option, if, if council decides to go with an advisory ballot question, um, then staff would continue to provide general information about the project throughout the election. So, just brief overview that, that community feedback continues to be an important part of this process. Um, and with that, we're gonna jump into the ballot advisory question, and I'm gonna hand that over to Chris.
Thank you. So, look, uh, council, um, what the administrative staff is looking for tonight is some direction from the council. Um, the options are pretty straightforward. You can take no action, or you could take action. If you take no action, everything's gonna stay exactly the way it is today. If you decide to take action, what you can do is an ordinance, have a public hearing, and the chambers will be filled, and probably two or three other rooms will be filled. You'll probably get a lot of emails, probably a lot of letters, people stopping you and giving you input before you pass the ordinance. The other thing you can do is a ballot question, and you can do two different types of ballot questions. One is a non-binding advisory ballot question that would simply ask the voters, giving them some information, some general information, should the city council adopt an ordinance? And that would be non-binding in the sense that whatever the results are, it does not bind the council as to what it is that you're ultimately going to do. Or, you could simply do a referred measure and simply ask the citizens, based on X, Y, and Z, do you want us to enter a con- into a contract with these, with these terms? And so, what we're hoping for tonight is some direction. The timing is critical, because in order, uh, the city clerk advises, in order to get a ballot question, whether it be a non-binding advisory ballot question or a referred measure to the voters, we're gonna have to act sometime in the month of August, and staff is gonna have to draft that question with your input, um, and, and still get that on the agenda for your, for your action. So, uh, that's really what the purpose of this slide is. Your outgoing city attorney did a horrible job in, in preparing with no, absolutely, it's blank. You know, it's like, "Chris, are you ever gonna do anything?" Um, so, my apologies for that, but, uh, that's really something that we're gonna be looking for, uh, at the end of this workshop. Or if you wanna give it to us now, you can certainly do that.
Okay, I've got some folks, uh, that wanna speak on this. Mr. McGough, you're first.
Yes, thank you. Question for you, Mr. Daly. So, if there's, um, how much information would we have to have? And how much information would we have to provide to the public prior to having either a non-binding advisory question or a referred measure? Would we just simply be asking the question about a waste hauling measure? Or, I guess, just to say it again, how much information would we need to provide to the public at that point? How much could we provide?
Yeah, exactly. It's a great question. So, on a non-binding advisory question, it's not really, it's not, certainly not a Tabor question, and it's not a question, uh, you know, seeking, you know, an ordinance or anything like that. And so, there's gonna be quite a bit of leeway that the city has in providing information. I think what we wanna stay away from is urging voters to vote one way or another. I think what we wanna do is just provide information. If it's, if it's more of a, of, of an issue of, shall the city just do that? And it's gonna be binding on the council, I think it's another, it's another question about how much information do you wanna provide? And the tricky part of this whole process, uh, I think has, has already been, uh, spoken to is, you know, there's gonna be individual negotiation that's gonna go on here uh, with whoever is the, is the hauler of choice, if you will. And so, it's kind of hard to, at this stage in the game, to really predict what those ultimate negotiations are gonna be. And so, it's gonna be difficult, I think, to craft a question that's gonna be so precise. And I think, um, one of the issues, if I was voting, uh, on this matter, is that the question says one thing, but that the ultimate contract says another. And so, I think, you know, it's gonna be uppermost in the minds, certainly of the council, as well as the administrative, uh, team to make sure that there's some consistency between what is being asked and what ultimately is going to happen here. And so, there's gonna be an art to this.
Yeah, it would seem that, uh, one of the issues would be, I can envision, for example, the advisory, uh, outcome of the advisory question being, yes, we should move ahead. Then we get into the negotiations, and things just aren't like we thought they were going to be when we get to that, what we think is the final contract. And so, at that point, it comes to the, to the council, and it's no longer a truly acceptable, uh, measure for us. So, the difference between the actual, you know, the advisory question and then what we actually have to decide upon afterwards, or two, could be quite different things.
That's correct. And so, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit risky. And it's going to take a lot of communication with the public to make sure that the public understands this is what you're voting on and is it binding or isn't it? And this is what we're telling you is going to happen versus what might ultimately happen. That's going to come through communication.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Marriott.
Thank you. I have one more set of questions I wanted to ask before I get to speaking on the topics Mr. Daly brought up. The one thing that didn't show up in your program was about how HOAs are treated within this type of a program. What do we do about HOAs?
Sure, when we talked at the last workshop, we had moved forward with the idea that HOAs would be excluded. They would have the option to opt into the program. But at this point, we looked at looking, we looked at 32,000 households in the city, which was our best guess at all the non-HOA households. So we had, at this point, moved with them out and then had the option of opting in if they would like to.
Okay. So what about HOAs that offer trash pickup to their residents but don't offer recycling? How do you treat them with this program?
So the city and the ordinance has the option to say, any hauler that's providing services should also provide recycling alongside trash service. That's what we see a lot of communities.
Should or shall?
Should, shall. Shall, sorry, shall, yes. So typically what we see in other communities is as part of that ordinance that moves forward with the contract, it says any hauler that is providing services, because you are, you have the HOAs, and then you have other households who just say, I don't want to be part of the city's system.
Who opt out, yeah.
Yeah, the opt out. And you say, that's fine. Any hauler can still provide services in the city, but you have to provide a comparable set of services, which means recycling has to be included alongside trash service.
So that's one way of doing it. What's, is that the only way of doing it?
The other way of doing it is just not doing it and just leaving those, leaving the HOAs completely on their own. Another approach is to work them in over time. So some communities have said that HOAs have, when their contract expires, are going to roll into the city program. Sometimes cities, when they go out and renew this in three or five years, say, okay, now the HOAs are coming on board. So there's a variety of different factors that have to do with timing, basically.
And so I didn't see anything, any, in the presentation, any kind of a recommended pathway here? Anything about, we recommend that ultimately you roll HOAs in? Or am I, is the inference then that the recommendation is that you just, we just leave HOAs alone from here and here and here and forever?
The inference, at this point, we're recommending that they are not included in the initial proposal, that they have the option to opt in. And we have not made a recommendation in terms of rolling them in over time or whether or not we would extend an ordinance that they have to have recycling as well. We have not gotten into that level of detail. It's been quite a challenge on the staff side to just figure out the number of HOAs, who has services, who has contracts. Still trying to build a good database on what that looks like.
Okay. And then what about HOAs that exist but don't provide trash service?
So they would be included. So it would be HOAs that do not provide trash service, essentially would be how it was written.
So HOAs that don't provide trash service are just treated like people who are not in HOAs? Okay. So what's the ramifications if the program were just to require that HOAs are no longer allowed to provide their own trash service? That if, if the people who are not in HOAs, if this is what they get, why not just say, if you're in an HOA, this is what you get too?
So why not just include everyone in the city?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Sure. So one of the benefits of doing that would be more economies of scale. You add essentially, you know, up to 9,000 more households, so you might get a better price out of that. You do have issues with HOAs having current contracts, so those contracts would have to be broken. So in a lot of cases, we see that's where they're rolled in over time as the contracts expire. And it also, you know, from where you guys sit, gets into a perspective of where the city manages HOAs. And so some cities have taken, you know, a more hands-off approach that we're not involved with that level of HOA management. Other cities have dived into it. So it tends to be more of a political decision.
So some cities who have gone to single hauler have just included the HOAs in and some have not? Is that?
Yeah, and it also depends on community size and structure. Sometimes it's three HOAs and sometimes it's hundreds. So it depends on what the community split is.
Okay. Real quickly on that, do we have a tortuous interference with contract issue with that? Yeah.
And is the, is the strategy of just requiring them to be in after their contracts expire, we don't have any issues with that, I would imagine?
No, but I mean, candidly, what I would recommend is if we decided to go that route, I really do think it should be fully evaluated and counsel should be briefed by the city attorney's office.
Okay. Okay, yeah, fair enough on that one. Okay, so on to Mr. Daly, Mr. Daly's question or about the ballot advisory question. So I'm going to weigh in and say, I think that we should have an advisory question for the citizens to vote on, on this issue. A couple of things come to mind for me. One is, there's a whole lot of moving pieces to this. There's the part we just talked about, about the HOAs in or out. There's volume-based pricing, which may be advantageous to some people and disadvantageous to others. Whole lot of, whole lot of moving parts there. There's the price issue, which appears to me to be, maybe it's cheaper, maybe it's the same, maybe it's more expensive. And I think the voters, our residents, the people that this is going to apply to, I think should weigh in on that for us to how important that is to them. Like a lot of issues, I think there's a group of people who are going to be absolutely all for this, no matter what. It could be more expensive, it could be, no matter what, they're going to be for it. There's also going to be a group of people who are going to be against this, no matter what cost. It could be cheaper, doesn't matter, they may be against it. But I think there's a whole lot of people in the middle who may be for it, they may be against it, just will depend on what it contains. And I think we need to hear from those folks with an advisory question. I wish we had a better opportunity to give them actuals or tighter actuals. I'm a little bit disappointed in the pricing part. Like the opt-out, for instance, with a fee is two to $11 plus maybe up to a buck thirty-five for billing. It's like a six-fold difference from low to high. I don't know how somebody accurately evaluates that within themselves. Again, getting back to those groups, I think the people who are for it, no matter what it contains, say, so what? I don't care. The people who are against, who are against it, they're going to say, so what? I don't care. But the people in the middle, I don't know how they make that decision. So I wish we had tighter or a little bit better to go on, on what was the most important thing for people with trash hauling, which was the price. But that being said, I think an advisory question is probably the right thing to do. And then with the answer to that advisory question, then it'd be up to the city council to work their way through and the city staff to work their way through these individual bidding issues, issues to come up with the best collection of services and features and whatnot and pricing to come up with the best thing. So for me, I'm certainly, that would be my advice, that we do that.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you. So thank you for all the work you've done on this project. I appreciate you. So my opinion is that we have surveyed our citizens twice already. The first time we surveyed our citizens, they said, yes, we would like more recycle options and take a look at organized hauling. So then we surveyed them again. And again, they said, yes, we would like more recycling options and take a look at organized waste hauling. Both times, the citizens have told us that they would like us to do this. And I think that as a council, we're elected by our citizens to make the tough decisions. And we have made tough decisions over the last couple of years. And we are good at it and we work well together as a council. And we don't all agree and we have seven very different opinions. And I think with our seven very different opinions, we can take a look at things like RFPs and we take complicated information and we can make a good decision. I would strongly support the council making the decision on this and not putting it on the ballot. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just go around. Mr. McGough.
Yes, thank you. In, going back a little while, I was much more in favor of the council making the decision, as indicated by Ms. Miller, that we do have the expertise, the knowledge, and I believe the judgment to make a sound and good decision. But I'm now more, much more inclined and would favor an advisory question being placed on the ballot, just simply because we will get additional input from the citizens that is more current than we've had in our survey. And the survey that has gone out to the community over the past many years has many questions on it. And so people go through a very large number of questions and give us quick answers on many, many issues. Here, we would be directing their attention to a single issue. And I think, taking into account the judgment of the citizens of Arvada, I think we would get good input and would, it would give us good direction at that point. So I strongly favor an advisory question at this point.
Ms. Ford.
I go along with what Ms. Miller says. One of the concerns that I have about putting this on the ballot as an advisory question is that we will be asking our citizens to answer a question that we're not going to be able to give them all the information that they would need to make an intelligent decision. Because when you look at some of the important qualities for choosing a hauler, quality of service, they really won't know what the quality of service is going to be like, especially if it's a hauler that's different from what they already have. We're not sure at this point of the services provided. That was the second important quality for choosing a hauler. And cost was third. We won't be able to give them an actual cost. So people will be basing their decision on something that they really don't have firm information about. And I think it's going to be very difficult for anyone answering this advisory question to be able to do so without that accurate information that we will have as a council. Because we can look at figures without revealing them and causing problems amongst the haulers. We have the information as to what people are looking for. I agree with Ms. Miller. We have surveyed a number of times. I'm very confident in our survey techniques. If I question those survey techniques, then I need, as a representative, I need to question whether we need to continue surveying if we don't believe in our surveys. So I would say that I'm definitely in favor of council making the decision for the residents because I believe we'll have the most accurate information to make that decision.
Mr. Pfeifer.
I agree with Ms. Dot and Ms. Ford, Ms. Dot. Ms. Miller and Ms. Ford, in regards to council making the decision, I think we've, for I don't know what, 10 years now, been asking the citizens, probably not quite 10 years, the citizens on this topic. And as Dot came on, came on board with council, that was one of the first things she pounded her fist on, that we are not listening to our citizens. And so I feel like we're at that point where we need to take action. My fear, along with Ms. Ford here, is when somebody doesn't understand the depth and breadth of this conversation, it will be quick for people to just simply say no without taking the time to understand the complexity of this discussion and this topic. And I think that council has had, we represent the people, we are citizens of this city. We are your neighbor, we are your family. We are here to protect the interests of the city and the citizens. And we've been voted here to make tough decisions, and this is one of those decisions. So I think council should be making the decision.
Okay, Ms. Marriott.
I thought I said it already. I think we should have an advisory question.
Very good. Ms. Miller, you've weighed in. Mr. Jones.
Just want to ask a question of staff first. Let's just pretend going to Ms. Ford's comments around the information. If we, how long will it take for council to get all of the right information to make a right decision? Because it doesn't feel like we have, we're not there yet. There's still a lot of questions. And so it feels like we're not going to have that information in the next week or two or month or two months. What's the timeframe for getting all of those, the clarity around all the things that were asked tonight?
We can provide that clarity in a relatively short timeframe. The issue is that this, the pricing information are part of bids that were submitted by these companies. And the information contained in those bids is proprietary.
Yeah.
So the information, we would, we would need to provide that information, that analysis to you in some sort of a confidential communication.
Okay. But it also feels like there's other questions around levels of service and, you know, whether or not to include or exclude the HOAs.
Correct. And again, I think that's part of the nuances associated with the actual negotiation process. So by, you know, asking the advisory question, we are in a situation where we would not be able to answer all those questions until the advisory ballot question is asked and answered. And then we would, if it's, if the answer is yes and the direction is to move forward, we would have to conduct a negotiation process with one or more of the bidders, depending on the circumstances.
Okay. So if I, if I go back to where I think it started, when the Sustainability Committee came to council, which, again, I know there are several members of the Sustainability Committee here. Thank you for the work that you did to jumpstart the conversation. It was around increasing the citizens of Arvada and their ability and access to recycling, which I think is, was a great conversation. But that conversation has kind of morphed into lots of other things and services that maybe got confusing as the RFP, as we went through the RFP process. I remember Mr. Pfeifer actually said, keep it simple. Let's just, let's keep this simple and let's put out an RFP that says, or that's asking the question around trash and recycling. But we put out an RFP that asked a lot more than that. And I think what I'm seeing in the presentation is the confusion around kind of that big request and big lift of the haulers to try and figure out, what is it that we're really trying to answer here? And again, I go back to Mr. Pfeifer in keeping it simple and trying to really understand what it is that our citizens want. I think the other question we haven't really talked about is, you know, the number of HOAs, the new communities that we have that are already offering this level of service. And when I say a level of service, I'm talking about trash and recycling. And so when the, when the statistics came out that showed that Arvada had 7% or whatever the number was, recycling rate, you know, kind of took everybody back and said, wow, it seems like we could do better than that. But we never really looked at what the inclusion of these new communities and because they are offering those services, what does that really bring us to? And so I think, you know, we really have to look at what the question is we're asking. If where we started was recycling and now we're into composting and, you know, all of these other, you know, types of services, bulk trash pickup and so on and so forth, it doesn't feel to me like this is a simple ask of the citizens. And I would say that I'm in the camp of an advisory question, a simple advisory question. Should the city, whatever the language is, offer a trash and recycle system to the citizens of Arvada and kind of push all of that other stuff to the side to get the real data? Because I think the data is skewed. I think there are a lot of people who, to Mr. Marriott's point, are going to be completely for it or completely against it. But it's those people in the middle trying to really understand, what does all of this mean? And if we ask a simple question around trash and recycling, I believe that we're going to get better data to make a better decision. And so I would, I would be in favor of asking the citizens an advisory question, a simple advisory question.
Okay, so we've got a 3-3 and I'll break the tie. The allegation is that we're not listening to the citizens because we're not simply following the answer to the survey questions. I would say that the survey I would say that the survey questions have been too general, and that there is no better way to listen to the citizens than to put it to a vote of the citizens. I think that an advisory question, I would be happy to go with a referendum, frankly. And I, for one, will, whatever the outcome of the advisory question, I will follow. I don't think anyone should be afraid of going to the citizens on an issue this important. I think that it is an issue that that's, it's this important. It is, in effect, creating a franchise. And I, I look at it not unlike the vote that the citizens made to authorize the city to, to go into broadband if we were to choose to do so. We sought the citizens' vote on that type of franchise type of issue. I think it's appropriate to seek the citizens' vote on this issue as well. So I think we're going to move forward with an advisory question.
Okay. We'll certainly do that. Council, what I would like to propose is that we reconvene with you another, one more time, an executive session, to really hone in on what you would like that, that question to say, and what scope of services you would like to present. Because, you know, the RFP was, was presented to the, to the haulers based on direction we got from the city council about districts and about different options along those lines. We can certainly, we can certainly focus that in, but I think we're going to need a little bit more time with you in order to do that under instructions to negotiators.
So should we, but can we answer some of those questions tonight? Questions two through seven in terms of, or do you think that we need to have that?
No. I, I think we can, we can certainly answer those. We can begin that process at least tonight, sure, with questions two through seven, which is on the next slide.
Okay. I'll just run down the line again. Mr. McGough, where are you on districts?
Let me just page back here to my, to the pages that have a little bit more of the, the narrative. But yes, I didn't see any, any major problem with any of these on the districts. Yes, I, I agree that we should contract with one hauler for citywide services.
Okay. Ms. Ford.
I would agree for simplicity.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Yes, districts. Four districts, yeah. Four, no, no, no. F-O-R. I'm supporting.
A single hauler?
No.
Or no, you, you want districts?
I want districts.
Okay.
What'd you say?
Me? I, I said I wanted one hauler for the simplicity of the billing and...
So one, one districts, okay? Mr. Marriott, I'm sorry, I'll go down the same line.
Districts.
One.
I would go with a single hauler.
I would go with the single hauler based upon the information that there's not a, you know, the pricing looks like it's the same, and I think it makes more sense based upon who is proposing to do it. It sounds like it's the four, it sounds like it's four major haulers, so I would support one district.
Can I, can I weigh in?
Sure.
It's shocking that John and I are agreeing on this one, but, but can I just throw one thing out, and I'm sure John may agree, who knows? The only reason I, I get to the simplicity around it, my fear is if the one fell, if the one hauler fails, we don't have anyone else to back up. So if something happens, we don't have that backup, and that competition keeps prices down. And my fear is, is if you stick with one, and we have a five-year contract, now granted, these are great negotiators over here, they'll take care of it, but, you know, price compression with competition is something I would want. Because the biggest thing, why I would support this, is it has to be, the cost has to go down. So I'll leave my argument there, but that's my reason.
So just real quick on that one, that point, it's, this is going to be a $7.6 million contract, roughly. And, you know, based, and that's basing it on $20 a month times 32 million, or 32,000 households or something. And so I think that's really, again, if price is the number one reason why we should explore this, then I think a single hauler, we're going to have better negotiation points to, to really drill that. If it, if $20 is kind of the bottom line, well, yeah, we're bringing you one hauler, and it's, you know, $12. I just think you have better negotiation points with a single hauler.
Okay. So you've got the majority wanting to go with a single hauler. Mr. McGough, on volume-based pricing?
I have more mixed feelings on this particular one, but I understand the, and I think the compelling argument is that it simplifies all the billing to have a, to have a volume-based rates. I mean, you could have the, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say, it would simplify the billing, but the, on the size of containers. But I like the point that Mr. Jones made earlier, that there's at least some option, even if there's not a price differential, for people to choose a different size container. You know, I, I know for many people, a 96 gallon, if that were to be the standard, is too large. And I think people ought to be able to individually negotiate or talk with the provider about a different size container. But yes, I would prefer the volume-based rates. I'll just leave it there.
Okay. Ms. Ford.
I, I'd be for, as well as the flexibility, if someone needed a smaller container or wanted to pay for a larger container. So I'm good.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Well, I think it depends on the purpose of this. If this is for simplicity for an RFP, I would think, no, we should stick with one consistent answer. But at a later point, if the citizens agree, then we can explore volume-based pricing. I, I can go back to how we educate. If we overwhelm everyone on everything, and we want to compare apples to apples on pricing, we can't give them a menu option for our RFP to come back. So for the RFP, I would say, no, let's pick one and stay with it. 96 and 96, because that's the most common that people understand, because all the HOAs are 96s, or most of them are. So from an RFP perspective, with a goal to introduce volume pricing at another time determined.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes, on volume-based pricing, I think somebody who's a single resident, or an elderly person, or somebody who is very diligent about not putting trash in the trash can ought to have the ability to affect their price. And that's really within a plan like this, you're not going to have any ability to affect your price except this. And I think if this is the only consumer choice you have, it's better than having no consumer choice. So I would say yes.
Ms. Miller?
I'm going to agree with Mr. Pfeifer on this, as far as the RFP, keeping it simple. We had originally asked for it to be kept simple with trash and recycling, and I think that confused a lot. And so I think that, as much as I love the volume-based pricing option, I think we need to keep that RFP very, very simple.
Mr. Jones?
I agree with Ms. Miller and Mr. Pfeifer, that let's introduce volume-based pricing after we, after we've established a baseline. So kind of a flat rate out the door with one style of can, and then introduce that later.
God, I love it when we get 3-3 ties and I get to break the tie. I, I definitely favor volume-based pricing for a number of reasons. I think that I, for one, you know, I've got my two 96-gallon containers out there, and I push one out, my one that goes out every week, just the, the regular trash, and it may have one or two bags of trash in it. So, you know, I think that if our goal is to incentivize folks to, to reduce their, and, and I've, I've learned a lot about recycling, and I think it's beneficial to, to give folks the option, so.
Just one more comment. So, and I agree, the challenge is, in this process, if we're asking a simple advisory question, we need to, to be able to speak to it succinctly, and the first question that people, well, what is, what does volume-based pricing mean? Well, we can say, well, the less trash you throw out, the cheaper it is. Well, how much cheaper? You know, as opposed to just saying, you know, again, I totally get volume-based pricing, but I think for our citizens in this advisory question, I'm just hoping we can keep it as simple as possible. Because look at the discussion that we're having about this.
Right.
Well, and if people are comparing what they spend today, I think when I drive up any neighborhood, most of them are 96-gallon anyways. So if they're thinking, well, is this cheaper or more, it's hard to tell. So I, I would, you broke the vote, I guess, no matter what. We're not going to convince the mayor to go one way or the other, I guess. I'll give up.
Well, but, but the reality is, is that people will pay less if they have a smaller can.
And I, I don't think that's, I think for here, the problem I'm having with page 12, I think it's page 12, we all got it down now, is the range. You can't, you can't tell if you're going to really save money or spend more money when you have a wide menu of options. So I don't know if that's fair for even ourselves to be able to do the matrix pricing, to figure out, was this beneficial or not? I think we have to start with a baseline, like Mr. Jones said, to say, okay, wait, I pay, I don't know, $20 for my 96, and now I'm going to pay 18? Okay, that makes sense to me, it's simple math, but when I get menu pricing?
Okay. Well, let me, let me, let me look at it this way. The volume-based pricing, the customer service, and the additional services, are those all questions we would better be able to answer after we look at the proprietary information and have a sense of what kind of package might be negotiated?
Yeah.
I would say yes, in kind of partnering up the different options together and putting them side by side.
Why don't we, why don't we do that, then?
Yeah.
Why don't, I, I think maybe we should have more information, and then I'll either get more people to agree with me, or more people to disagree with me.
Or the mayor to agree with us.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So, so let's, let's hold off on three, four, and five, until we have that executive session to, to look at those numbers. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Good. On billing, I think that's one we can probably answer. Mr. McGough?
On the billing, I would favor the, the city doing the billing.
Ms. Ford?
If that's the simplest way of doing it, I would favor, I would favor that.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Yeah, I think the city should. It shows more ownership and more skin into the game when we start talking about this, and it's, I think the city should do it for simplistic of billing.
Ms. Marriott?
No.
Ms. Miller?
City.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I'm on the fence on this one.
It's okay. They already got four votes.
Okay. I don't need to answer, then. My opinion doesn't matter, Dot said. You know, I see value on either side of it, but I also see complications with the city doing it. So I'd say no.
Okay. I, I'm also on the fence on this. I, I want to make sure that if the city does it, that we recoup the cost. And I'm, I'm concerned about the city subsidizing, you know, that we really need to be comparing apples to apples. So I would prefer to, I, I tend to prefer having the, the companies provide it, but the majority has spoken. And on carts, that's an interesting one. Mr. McGough?
Yes, indeed, it is an interesting one. But taking a look at the material that's been presented to us, I think there, I would favor the city purchasing, simply for the, well, two, two reasons. One, that, as mentioned here, capital, capitalizing over an extended period of time. And secondly, that our intended contract would be for three years with a couple, two-year renewals. That could, at last, seven years. Could last only the three years. And I think it would not be cost beneficial to the city to require the, the provider to also provide the carts. I think the, the cost would be too much for somebody coming into a, a contract that's uncertain after three years.
Ms. Ford?
I would like to see the carts be owned by the city only from the standpoint that I would not like to see, if the city wanted to change providers at some point, I, I would hate to see that we have to change carts again. I think it would be nice to have a, I don't know, what's the right word? Not a monotone cart, but just a cart, a plain cart that doesn't, you know, that could have a sticker put on it maybe for the provider, but that they don't get changed every time a provider changes. Because to me, that's a waste of carts.
Mr. Pfeifer?
I think capitalizing over a 10-year period and the grants available to it, I think that is something that benefits the taxpayer and the citizens from those benefits, and keeps the costs down in the long run.
Mr. Marriott?
City should absolutely not own the carts. The, a, a $5 million-plus expenditure to buy trash cans by the city, that money would have to come somewhere, from somewhere, probably out of road maintenance, or park maintenance, or any number of other things that, that are very valuable to the city. I think the fact that the provider would own the carts puts them in a position to be more competitive in subsequent bids. It gives them an investment already into Arvada. If they've got that, that sunk capital cost, it gives them quite a bit of incentive to continue to offer, if, if we do go forward in a program like this, excellent service and excellent pricing, so that they can keep using those 36,000 carts that they own. And so I can't think of any reason whatsoever for the city to sink that kind of money into, into trash carts, nor own them. And while I understand the contract can read to, you know, that they'll be at residents' homes, and that the hauler will have to take care of fixing them and replacing them, and this and that with them, if a hauler goes out of business, somebody from the city is going to have to go over there and get all those carts. And they're going to have to go take them somewhere, and put them somewhere, and main, maintain them, and manage them, and deal with them, until a new hauler comes around to take them or refuse to take them. I see all kinds of pitfalls and, and problems with the city owning the carts. And it, and the biggest one, really, is that initial expenditure of millions of dollars that will have to come from somewhere.
Ms. Miller?
Well, I was going to agree with you, but then the last part of what you said made me disagree with you. So I'm on the fence on this one. So I feel like, like Ms. Ford, if we owned the carts, then it would be very easy to change haulers, and if Mr. Archer could come up with the funds to own the carts without taking the money out of streets and road maintenance, then that would be cool.
So do we need more information?
I, I really do. It's hard for me to make a decision on this one.
So, just to clarify, at the end of the contract, we would own the carts? So this would be the upfront purchase, is what we're talking about? So at the end of that contract, we've paid for the carts over time, and we would own the carts, or we would own the carts right away upfront, if we purchased them upfront?
Quick question. Does the hauler, they'll do it to the design we ask?
Yeah. We can brand them and...
Well, that changes the story. Where does that say that in your presentation?
I don't know if it's included exactly in the presentation, but I just wanted to make that clarifying point, is I realized that there was confusion as we started talking through those comments.
Maybe this is one, let me, let me give a quick, Mr. Jones, do you want to chime in on this, or would you like to get more?
No, because I agreed with Mr. McGough and Mr. Marriott.
Okay. Well, here's, here's, here's my concern. I've already had at least one citizen say to me, wait a minute, I've already paid my taxes, that you're going to use that $5 million, you know, not one taxpayer, but all of our taxpayers combined have put in money that totals that $5 million. I've already paid for, you know, that money in, you're going to use that money, and then you're going to bill me again? And, and that concerns me if we want this thing to pass. So I'm, I think we need some more information on this before. And frankly, one of the haulers in question has indicated to me that they ought to own the, the trash, they ought to pay for it, and that it really makes more sense for them to front the money. So I think we need some more information.
We'll provide you more information on that.
Okay. Okay, we've kicked the can down the road on part of this, but I think we've made some difficult decisions as well.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Ford?
We, we haven't talked about customer service and who would be involved. Would it be the individual resident that would have to call the hauler if there were problems with the hauling service?
Yeah, that's the questions that we're going to get in executive session, I think, in terms of the pricing information for those items. Four, five, or actually, three, four, five, and now seven.
Okay.
Okay?
And one last question. Will this be up on the website for folks to get? Because it's not up tonight, so.
Are you talking about the PowerPoint?
The presentation, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Let's take a quick, does that complete what you need from us from, on this topic?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we do a quick stand-in place, and then we'll move on to the financial discussion. Apologize for my coughing through some of that. I actually have a voice tonight, which I haven't had for the last three days. Okay, Mr. Devon? Mr. Archer?
Mr. Archer?
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about our tenure plan, CIP, and then a little bit of a review of a recession plan, a word that we haven't used around here in 10 years. So we do wanna dive into that. I do apologize that presentation will be only 150 slides tonight, so we cut it down a little bit. Mayor didn't even look up.
I'm texting the city manager as to, cause...
I'm going right now.
His employment is dependent on this.
Yeah, it's, it's not...
We can't control you, but we can control him.
It's not a good text, Mr. Archer, so please hurry up.
All right. I will go fast. So scheduled events coming up tonight, we will talk about tenure models. On August 12th, we'll take a deeper dive into CIP. The 23rd, we will review the city manager's recommended budget, pay plan, utility rates, and first and second reading of the budget. That does leave October 14th in case there are any further questions. So the models do run still 2019 to 2028. If you remember, we do not add the extra year except in the two-year budget. Tonight, we're gonna look at the general fund, parks, TI, and the utility funds. So for council's information, anything in yellow are changes since the last time we spoke. Everything else is the same. So market rate, that is the change for pay to keep the city employees in the market. If you remember last year, we made some significant changes related to PD, but all the rest of the non-sworn positions stayed relatively the same. Our number each year is 2%. We're looking at upward pressure for 2020. Two and a half may actually be low on that. In some cases, that could be as high as three and a half. More information coming. Healthcare, I did want to celebrate our successes a little bit. In 2019, our budget was 6%. We actually came in at 2. So our employees and their dependents are doing a wonderful job getting health under control. And this year, we are budgeting a 4% increase and trending below that as well. Exciting news on the Cadillac tax, depending on your point of view. From a financial perspective, they did move it out to 2022. This week, the House voted to repeal that. The Senate will be voting on that later this year. Why does that matter? It matters for the city because this is a significant number in our budget. Starting in 2022, our healthcare plan was going to be subject to this, and we do include that. If it gets removed, there will be changes to our plan to the positive. Some updates related to our internal service funds. I do wanna take one quick minute and introduce our intern, Abraham. Abraham, you wanna stand up real quick? So we were lucky enough to get Abraham from the utilities fund. He is a junior down at CU Denver studying finance. He had the opportunity to do an internship, and we were able to take advantage of that. And he worked, taking a look at both our vehicle replacement and vehicle maintenance funds, and this is what he asked to do to finish up his internship. So thank you for being an active counsel tonight. He's quite excited to come see you. He said, I've not come to one of these and this is fun.
There goes his credibility. Mr. Marriott?
Um, I, I was just gonna ask you a question on this slide. In yellow, you've got the actual cost for vehicle replacement and vehicles beyond the replacement cycle. Does that mean that tho- there's adjustments that need to go up for those, or are there adjustments that go down?
Actually down. Actually down, yeah. So what happened with the faster system is we're able to make some vehicles last longer than they were supposed to. And so what, part of what Abraham did is found out how many vehicles we have, and then we stopped contributing towards that. So if it was a 10-year cycle, it might be 1/10th per year, but maybe we got an extra two years out of that vehicle. The appropriate department doesn't contribute for two years till that vehicle's replaced.
Yeah, got it. Okay. That was gonna be then my follow-up question. Do we know we're following best practices as far as vehicle replacement intervals? And it sounds like that's being done.
Absolutely. The system is, is really amazing and would take a lot longer for me to replace than, or to explain than I have time, so. Still working through computer and buildings. Those are two models that you hear more about in the upcoming months. So jumping right in, you'll notice on the general fund, and I know this is very small, I do apologize, that as we sit right now, in the last year, we currently have a deficit or we're below our fund balance goal. You might ask why. Since the last time I presented this to you, we were in a positive of about 3.5 million. So there are some changes that have been made. The most significant one is the 2018 sales tax came in under our projection. And we talked about that at our year-end presentation earlier this year in, I think it was in February, but it might've been in March. There were also some smaller changes that have been made to the general fund. If we take a look at sales tax, we're also worried about 2019. So on August the 5th, we will be presenting you the mid-year report, and we'll talk further about some of the challenges we are seeing. But right now, sales tax is trending to be at about a 1.5% growth pattern. We had budgeted 3%. Auto use is growing and is better than we had hoped. Building revenues continue to outpace their budget, but they are slowing. And ultimately, interest revenue, seems kinda funny to be talking about that when I was literally doing backflips at the end of last year, but rates are starting to fall again on short-term Remember this chart for our talk on recession planning coming up later? I did wanna put this up here because we are talking about sales tax. As you will notice, this looks like a tale of two stories. So through 2009, 2009 and 2010, we saw month-over-month declines almost every month. We then started growing out of that at the end of 2010, and basically for the last eight years, did nothing but grow every single month. Except one month in February 2014, and I can't tell you why that month was down. You will notice, starting in June of 2018, we have gone down eight out of the last 12 months. What does that mean? Well, technically, that means the city of Arvada is in a recession from a sales tax perspective, okay? We're not ready to push the panic button quite yet, but we are starting to do planning. The leadership team has met over the past few months, talking about various options, and we'll dive into that here in a little bit. But we wanted to share this with city council, so you understand why we're doing that.
Let me, let me interject here that in my discussions with other mayors from surrounding communities, they're experiencing exactly the same thing. So it's, this is not Arvada-centric. This is, is the metro area.
Thank you for, thank you for letting us hear that. We will feel a little better if the month of June shows some sort of growth, since that was the time period it started one year ago. And we'll know more about that here in the next 10 days.
Very good. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Are you gonna show in here? I didn't preview your PowerPoint.
That's okay.
Which categories we are seeing the...
We're not, but we will on August the 5th.
In August, we will?
On August the 5th, we'll show it as part of our mid-year presentation.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
This may be early to ask this question, but do the, these numbers wouldn't show it yet, but any of the new sales tax collection rules that were put in place by the state wouldn't be showing up on this chart yet. Do we have those worked into our models going forward yet?
So really, that affects mostly just collections at the state level. Certainly for us, we've not changed any of our models to reflect any differences that might show up.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, you're talking about pretty large vendors that are subject to the new rules at the state level. And, and then when you're talking sourcing, we were always subject to sourcing in Arvada. So if companies called us, they should've been following that anyway. The only people that weren't subject to sourcing were communities that were collected by the state. Since we were home rule, it shouldn't change the smaller vendors for us.
Right. The only difference is, is that, that, you know, the, the rules have always been what the rules are, but smaller vendors and even large ones have kind of been not following the rules.
I agree with you, council member.
But with the emphasis on it now and the state trying to put some systems in, you know, as a, as a vendor, once you start following the rules, it's easier to follow the rules for everybody, or not follow the rules for everybody, than it is to follow the rules for some and not follow it for others. So, and, and I understand that we're probably talking about small amounts, amounts of money, but just wondered whether it was in, in the calculations. And certainly, I don't expect we would've started seeing it yet, but, but by the fall, I would expect, if we're gonna see anything, we would start seeing it by then.
We would agree with you. It's also another reason why we're not coming to council right now and saying, let's start cutting services, let's start cutting programs. We wanna see how some of that plays out as well.
Okay, thank you.
Taking a look at the expenditures, pretty much exactly the same as what you saw. The only change would be around vacancy. We're certainly in a very tight labor market right now, and so we've lowered that vacancy savings from 2.7 to 2.5. Pretty insignificant, and we'll see where things go from there. A quick recap of some of the positional changes. It looks like a lot is happening, but it is really not. So there's only one position up there that council may not remember, but you, you were made well aware of this, and that's the manager of development engineering. This was part of the work around the community economic development redo. The police accreditation, police recruiter, police training are all part of the core program, extending those positions. So those are positions today. They're just being extended beyond 2019. And the manager of communications, this is in the infrastructure. We spoke about this earlier tonight upstairs, and this is just converting an engineer. And I think the comment was this person can talk about, talk to engineers and convert that for us to understand. These other positions you see below are just part of the budget process that have been requested. Mr. Devon has not made, and the leadership team have not made up their mind on whether to request funding for these positions or not. Parks fund, as you see, is currently also in a negative in the final year. Some of the smaller changes related to that deal specifically around the growth with open space and then the apex reimbursement. So the apex reimbursement was getting a little bit ahead of where they are actually paying. So this is revising that. It got revised both on the expenditure side and on the revenue side. And then ultimately, open space has been growing a little bit greater than 3%, and we had to pull that back for the model. As the mayor did point out, other cities, other counties are seeing a reduction in revenue, so we wanted to reflect a little bit more conservative growth pattern there. And from a staffing perspective, Parks is really looking for an expansion related to open space, as that seems to be becoming one of our larger parts of our park system. And they would like to put a manager in place there. Again, this has not been approved yet. It's not in the model. I'm gonna take the TI funds together. So you will see the .21 fund is currently sitting at a positive of approximately 2.2 million. The .25 fund is sitting at approximately a negative of 2.2 million. We do look at these funds as a group, and we'll be making adjustments with the chief and his staff, so that both of these funds will show either zero or a little bit above by the end of the budget presentation this fall. The largest change, again, relates to the core team. That's in place now. The TI funds are also subject to the same sales tax, building use tax, auto use tax that the general fund has. And so if, as the general fund taxes go up, theirs go up. As the general fund goes down, theirs goes down.
Quickly say what the core team is.
That is the team that's currently being positioned in Old Town to help with the services that are happening in and around Old Town. So there's a, Mr. Devon, three or four member team?
This is the team of three officers. Core stands for community outreach, response, and enforcement. That team will be reaching out and, and focusing on the area around Old Town and also breaking out from there to look at issues that are associated primarily with some of the homelessness that we experience in the Old Town area.
Just wanted to make sure that our citizens were aware of what we were talking about.
Thank you. One thing I would like to point out with the TI fund that is a little bit different than the general fund is the ORA areas, the .25 fund does get to retain any additional sales tax that's generated there before the end of the Arvada area. So that does help them a little bit more than the other TI funds. All of the utility funds, water, wastewater, stormwater, all sit in the positive. Each one of those funds will be presenting rate changes and changes to their capital plans as part of this year's budget update. As it sits right now, the current rate increase calls for 3% in water, 2.9% in wastewater, and no change in stormwater other than the impervious area. More of, more information on this to come as our presentation on the 23rd of September will go in great detail. There are two positions that are included, an increase for a civil engineer to help with all the projects related, and then a stormwater regulatory analyst. Right now, this is being accomplished by three different temporary employees, and we would like to make this a permanent position moving forward. I'm not gonna look at council member Miller when I present the golf fund. So the golf fund is still growing its way out of the deficit that it created in the 2017, 2018 time period. They are on pace and are doing exactly what has been planned. The reason I did put this up here is did want to communicate to council and the public that there will be fee increases. One has already gone in play, but been put in... be fee increases. One has already gone in play, but been put in place in June of 2019. There'll be another one coming in June of 2020. And then from a restaurant perspective, they're looking at additional menu changes. I think many of you followed along on Facebook, where they brought in some younger people, children and younger adults, and had them pick some different menu items. And they're gonna look at costing those and putting them out at Westwoods, and then eventually at Lake Arbor.
Mr. Fiverr?
So even with those changes, we're still negative?
Correct. So we're at a negative in the current working capital balance, but each year we're adding a little bit to that and kind of moving towards a positive eventually.
Adding it from where?
I'm sorry?
Adding revenue from where?
Oh, so currently, each year, the-
You wanna go back to the other ones while you're talking, I can look at your other screen. Yeah, that one. But you can keep talking.
So your delta each year between revenues and expenditures is just a tiny little bit as we continue to move towards 2022 and 2023, and that helps each year to kind of lower the deficit. So they don't generate enough money in any one year to cover that deficit at all at one time.
So it looks like what, 2022, they start going positive?
Yeah, correct.
But we're still in a deficit. How are we gonna, how are we gonna fix that?
And that was mainly from the building, wasn't it?
That was from both, both buildings, Westwoods and Lake Arbor. So you had the redo at the Westwoods building, the complete takedown of the old building and put in of the new. And then at Lake Arbor, you had the remodel of the inside.
And so our, our, what we're charging is not covering that?
So what we're charging covers operations and a little bit towards that capital, but it doesn't cover it all inside one year. It covers it inside the, the tenure plan, but not all inside one year.
And our rates are comparable to other cities?
Very competitive, depending on which course. So Lake Arbor's actually, rates are one of the lowest in the metro region, offers a different type of a golf course. Westwoods are on the higher side, but certainly offers a different kind of challenge there as well. They compare every year to the courses that are not only local, but regional, because each course has kind of a regional draw, and they're definitely competitive. They do variable pricing, change the rates depending on the time of the day, time of the year, everything else. So.
And they've, and they've looked at all their expenses, and they're pretty tight as far as-
Really tight. In fact, a little over a month ago, I was, I happened to be out at the golf course just for a meeting, and they were already cutting back on their expenses, realizing that they had a rainy early start, and they weren't gonna be able to recoup some of that revenue, and so they were already cutting back.
So can you remind me, when we went down that path of remodeling, I thought we had money in the reserve to take care of that. Is that still my recollection? Is that correct?
Correct. We did. We had some additional expenditures that went over that. We still have some items on this that might be reimbursed, which would help. We have some outstanding invoices, one of them with Excel, one with some other companies that we're working through. So, this number should come back a little bit.
Brian, I just read an article on golfing, that golfing has been going down. Have we seen that in our numbers?
We've seen golf slowing down, but our numbers are still increasing each year. Other golf courses around us are seeing negative growth. So we're still holding on. We're not seeing what other golf courses are seeing.
Okay.
Our biggest benefit right now is we're still retaining a lot of tournament play because of what we can offer, certainly from a low-cost provider at Lake Arbor, and then from a very nice clubhouse, very nice restaurant, very nice menu option out at Westwoods, and a very competitive 27-hole course.
And just for clarification, the revenue, you didn't look at dot and see what happens? You looked this way, and now you get all the questions. Revenue transfers-
I asked them all ahead of time.
The revenue transfers from other departments that may use, use the facilities, I just want to clarify for the public that that's what we're seeing there.
Correct. There's revenue transfers from other departments, also from the general fund that supports the redo of certain capital items at the golf course, specifically GART pa, cart paths, and other improvements that are not only used by the golfers, but also used by bicyclists, runners, and everybody else that goes through the various parts of the holes.
Good.
Okay. Okay. Hospitality, tenure model, still looking good at the end. Do want to talk a little bit about what's going on. Certainly, you've heard a lot about the community need. We're still working through possibly a date certain, and when they're gonna continue at the center. One of the largest needs out there is really capital-related. And I put on hold waiting for direction, and I think Mr. Devon and I were gonna tag-team this a little bit. But they asked during their budget process if we could pay for the improvement of the microphones, the sound system, and, Mr. Devon, I think there was some walls in there.
I think there was wall coverings for the movable walls. We have not made any serious investment out there for several years, partly because of the issue with the, with the date certain. I think we do need to make some investment out there. The, you know, the sound system is a good example. It fades in and out, and we just need a new sound system there. And I, we've been looking at, at, you know, again, pending any specific direction to the contrary from the council, really giving them the go-ahead to go, to get those things taken care of.
I do want to point out that the hospitality fund does have, again, a positive fund balance throughout the, the tenure model, and so it could be something that we could look at working with them in a partnership to replace some of that as well.
Quick question, Brian, sorry.
Yeah, please.
So I'm struggling between golf and the hospitality. So in the restaurant, are those employees paid out of the golf funds?
They are.
Even though the food comes from the Arvada Center?
Correct. Yeah, the, the food that comes from the Arvada Center is the banquet food. So if there's a large event or something-
So the kitchen itself is not supported from the Arvada Center?
No, it's not.
So it's on its own. And what about the Stinger concession stand?
So the Stinger comes directly from the Arvada Center.
So that is under the Arvada Center expenses and so forth?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So just a slide on future strategic opportunities. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ford?
Having a problem with my buttons. Brian, what's the capital need for the hospitality, for the equipment? Do you have a figure on that?
The, so the sound system, the figure that we were presented was $90,000. And then the work, the, on the walls and the painting and everything was estimated between 200 and 300,000.
And, and wasn't there a cost for updating equipment for, in the kitchen, kitchen equipment?
There is, and I don't have that, I apologize. That's a pretty large cost.
That's what I thought. I was just curious what it was, though. Because we have old equipment, right? It's 20-plus years old, and we-
Almost 30 years old.
Almost 30 years old. And we probably want it, should have replaced it a while back, or?
Yeah, some of that has been put on hold depending on the ultimate direction. So.
Okay.
And some of it has been maintained, partially replaced, upgraded as much as they can. So.
Thanks.
So just looking at some future strategic opportunities, these were items that we presented to city council. I did want to put this slide back up again, because if council remembers the last time, we had the G-line in bright, big, bold, red letters. And so I'm excited to put it in green this time, and it'll drop off from this point forward. Do want to point out that from a security perspective, we're definitely working on hardening both the buildings and our data. We've heard a lot about some of the breaches that are happening, and the city's very dedicated to this. And certainly very excited about what's going on with conduit and fiber. We've had some presentations related to that. Taking advantage of the co-locate ordinance that was put in place a couple years ago and have really expanded our backbone. And then obviously, from a demographics perspective, Mr. Devon just spoke a little bit about the core team, some of the challenges around homelessness, and then we've always got growth and density challenges as well. We will not go very deep tonight on capital improvement. Just wanted to remind council again how the majority of our funding for capital improvement comes in play each year. So 20% of the first cent, or excuse me, 60% of the first cent of sales tax has to go to capital or debt related to capital. And that really means 20% of our sales tax collected each year is spent on capital. So if you look up, our sales tax is approximately 54 million. That means 43 million goes to operations, roughly 10.8 goes to capital. It's spent in this way. So council will remember that we had a sales and use tax bond approved in 2018. We issued that earlier this year. That takes up about 47% of our annual funding. We also have a 2015 and 2016 COP debt issue, takes up an additional seven and a half percent. And we've agreed to fund an aquatic center at approximately 1.5 million dollars per year. So you can see for the next X number of years, that we have earmarked or already agreed to spend about 68% of that capital money, leaving roughly 32%. That is to the discretion of city council. Right now, we use about 20% of that for taking lasting care. Those are things like replacing park equipment, replacing traffic signals, long-life markers, et cetera, and then one-time projects. And that would be things like new parks, new bridges, road expansion. Just wanted to review that very quickly. We will go much further in depth on August the 12th. So, any questions before we jump into the recession planning?
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I just noticed that we, we didn't get any information on numbers of building permits or anything specific on our use tax. And I'm wondering if you might comment on those?
Sure, sure. And I apologize for that. We'll dive deeper into that on August 5th when we do the mid-year. Right now, building permits are down compared to 2018, but they're not down significantly, and we're still exceeding our budget. And so if you back up out of this four or five-year growth period and go back to where things were more normal, whatever normal means, we're still exceeding normal. And so that's on the building use side and on the building revenue side. And then on the auto use side, because we have grown in population, our new population must still like to drive cars, because we're seeing a growth in our, it's, yeah, it's Councilmember Marriott, we appreciate that. We're seeing growth in the amount of revenue that's coming in related to auto use tax. And so overall, our use taxes are growing.
Do you remember offhand what the numbers related to building permits? We had a high of about close to 900?
Yeah, close to 900. No, we're, we're certainly gonna be lower. We're gonna be more in the 400 number.
Okay, so we've really-
And that's again, single-family permits only, single-family detached. So we will bring that number on the, the 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's dive into recession planning. So, again, why do we do this? We do this because we have a tenure model. This allows the city and Mr. Devon to make changes gradually or in small increments over longer periods of time, as opposed to have to come to city council and say, "We need to cut 10%, we need to cut 8%. Or, we just saw 20% growth, let's go spend that money." So we're trying to smooth out the highs and smooth out the lows. So where are we seeing pressure? On the revenue side, we've already talked about sales tax. We saw that chart. We talked through it a little bit. We're seeing pressure on court fees. So while we have increased our, an average number of court cases, overall fees are coming down. Now, this may change as our police department has become fully staffed, but again, remember, our police department's not charged with writing tickets, okay? So, this might be an ebb and flow, but it is something that we're keeping our eye on. And again, building activity, Councilmember McGough, your question there. We are exceeding budget, but it is less than it was before. On the expenditure side, certainly everybody hears construction costs, construction costs, construction costs. Those seem to be growing faster than we can keep our hands on. I think that is the case for more than just the city of Arvada. That seems to be across the state of Colorado. Pay and benefits. We're in interesting times. We have unemployment, it's very low. And we have wage pressure, which is kind of different. Usually don't have wage pressure with unemployment being quite low, but we do. So we have growth in both of these areas. And then obviously, infrastructure. So we've come a long way from the 2.5 million that we were putting in years ago to the 10 million we're putting in today, and we still have a gap. I think the most recent numbers say that if we could put an additional $7 million in for 10 years, we would be able to close that gap, and then we could continue at a lower number. But we're still a gap here. To set the base for city council, these are some of the revenue numbers, and when we talk a 1% change or a 2% change, what that means. And again, this would be up or down. So if we say, okay, sales tax missed by 1%, that would mean it would be a $525,000 one-year miss. Or sales tax was over by 1% over our budget, it would be, again, 525,000, or a 10-year hit of about 5.8 million. Why does that matter? So for example, in 2018, our budget was 4%. We came back at roughly 2%. Therefore, when you take that throughout the model, you're seeing that's an about $11 million pressure. This year, our budget's 3%. If you remember that slide prior, we're thinking we're gonna come in at about 1.5. So again, there's pressure on the model. Current, one year, not a lot of pressure, but when you put it out over 10 years, it becomes significant. Property tax. Everybody's property taxes are going up. Wanted to reflect what that means for the city of Arvada. So if you see a 1% change in your property tax bill, for the city of Arvada, we would receive approximately $66,000. Again, that would be 1% across everybody, okay? Or a 10-year of 700,000. We get very little when it comes to property tax compared to everybody else. 4.3 mils, very small number. So, if you say, okay, 1% sales tax compared to 1% property tax, they don't compare. So to make up for a sales tax 1% loss, we'd have to see about a 9% growth in property tax. Pretty big difference. Building revenues, to your question, Councilmember McGough, 1% is about 52,000 per year. If we flip that over and take a look on the expenditure side, this is how it looks. So a 1% change to pay, what we call our salary range adjustment or our market range adjustment, 1% difference about 380,000, or about 4.5 million, 4.4 million for the tenure. Steps, if we were to freeze steps for one year, that would save approximately 1.3 million, or about 4 million through the model. You might ask, "That doesn't really add up." Remember, the steps have a top. So in our 10-year period of time, people are gonna top out. So let's say I'm at step six, and I go to step 12. Six years from now, I'm, I don't grow anymore.
Mr. Marriott?
On, on that steps calculation there, would that be just suspending step increases for one year makes 1.3 million in that year?
Correct.
And then the effect of that carried through equals 4 million dollars over 10 years, even if the following year you were to go back to and unfreeze those steps and allow them, allow them to go, okay. It's really interesting, I'm making my notes here, with this 10-year financial plan, and particularly with the budget and the potential recession planning, that, you know, here in government, we don't have the option of raising more money very easily. In my business, when we're looking, looking in the red, we go, "Let's sell harder", you know, and try to fix it from that side. But in government, we don't have that. What we do have, though, is fixing it from the expense side.
Correct.
And I think this, this slide right here is very illustrative of where the money is that, that you can impact the bottom line at. It's, it's, it's in these types of things. So just observation, but-
Thank you.
But when we talk about salaries, though, and freezing salaries, do we know if that has an effect on productivity?
Um, I think, I would like to say that the employees at the city of Arvada, that would not affect productivity. I think they would work every day as hard as they can. It certainly may affect on retaining employees. So you may see more people leave. I don't think we can tie pay increases or non-pay increases to how hard the employees work.
But we know that when people leave more often, there's greater training costs and-
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, from, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ford, you're correct. From that perspective, absolutely. If you lose an employee, it certainly takes, you know, in the police department, an entire year to maybe retrain that if they don't have a lateral to retrain that employee. So from that perspective, yes. I, I missed that, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
And, and the, the pressure of the- And, and the, the pressure of the salaries that we're seeing, is it, am I correct in saying that it's because of the fact that salaries haven't increased much over the years, and we're sort of making that up? That gap where people were really getting cost of living raises?
Um, it's not necessarily that and more the market itself, that the Denver metro region, certainly state of Colorado, is seeing a lot of increases. And so that's more of the pressure than missing out on increases prior.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Devon?
Yeah, I'd like to add a little bit to this discussion. If we were to implement, if we were to implement a, for example, a step, a one-year freeze on steps, that would be in the course of a recessionary period is likely when we would do that. That is a situation where, in experience I've had in other places, where you're implementing something like that in order to avoid the possibility of laying people off. And if you have to choose between two, I would certainly want to, you know, talk to our employees about the idea of, let's, if we can freeze our pay, that saves a whole lot of jobs potentially. Because one, one point three million dollars worth of jobs is a, is a, is a, is a pretty significant, that, that's a number of positions that could be subject to, to having to lay off. And, and that's exactly the, the discussion that's occurred here, around here before, back in the, back during the Great Recession, as well as in the place where I managed in California, where we actually had, actually had to implement both, where we had to actually freeze pay and actually reduce jobs in order to keep solvent. And so that's the kind of environment that you're, that you're working in when you're looking at these kinds of steps. We're not there yet, but that's why we're having this discussion, is to potentially plan for being there if the situation was going to occur.
I found it ironic that these slides are in black. Okay, go on.
I make no comment about that. So from a healthcare perspective, one percent change, while significant, certainly would not make up for one percent anywhere else. But certainly, as you can see, just the savings that staff was able to, excuse me, the team was able to get over the past couple of years has helped a lot to the bottom line. One year, not much, but when you grow that out over a ten-year period of time, that's huge savings. I did include the slide more from an operational perspective. So pay and benefits on the first slide, this is more operations. And you can see, again, being a service entity, a lot of our costs are in people. And so when you look over at operating dollars, you know, one-year saving seventy-five thousand, ten-years, eight hundred, that's pretty small. And then same thing on the C I P side. If you remember, we talked about discretionary with a little over sixty-eight percent already being committed. What's remaining from a C I P expenditure is pretty small. So we did want to put this in just to wrap all this up and make it a little more real. And Mr. Devon already talked a little bit about this. And so if we had to see a three percent cut in sales tax, let's just say we have a zero-growth year, what would that mean at the end of the model? So you can see, that's approximately one point six million for one year, something we can handle as an organization. But when you grow that through the ten years, when you reset that base, it becomes quite difficult, seventeen million dollars to the model. And what would that mean? How would we have to fix that? So we could basically do a service reduction, that would be approximately fourteen employees. Again, that's an average of all the employees. You look up there and see a hundred and twelve thousand. That's pay, benefits, and all the costs related to that employee, not what each employee gets paid, but that's the entire average. Or, as Mr. Devon said, all employees could take a pay freeze for a year. No steps, no salary increases, no reclasses, no regrades. Everybody's the same in two thousand and twenty, and again, in two thousand and twenty-one, something like that. And that would reset that base, Councilmember Marriott, as you were talking about, and grow out from there.
And of course, recognize this would be in the situation of us determining that we're actually in a recession, and employees in a recession might be much more willing to have their pay frozen than face the possibility of being unemployed.
Absolutely, Mayor, absolutely. Another option would be what they call across-the-board cuts. This is usually the easiest item to do, maybe not necessarily the best item to do. But you could go to each of your department heads and say, "I need X amount from you." Now, the challenge with that is that X amount also includes pay and benefits. And so if, if we were to come to finance, as an example, you see up there, an approximately two and a half percent cut to finance is fifty thousand dollars. In my entire budget, I have a three-point-some-odd-million-dollar budget. Of all the money I have, about two hundred thousand is what I would call discretionary dollars. And those are dollars that we use for training, what we use for our supplies, what we use to pay for things like additional computers. That's two hundred thousand of my three point eight million dollar budget. And so in essence, that would be roughly, even though it says a two point five percent cut, it would actually be a twenty-five percent cut to my contingency dollars. Or I would have to go cut an employee or cut a service to make that work. Again, or prioritize. So we could take a look at the items that we do today and cut back or eliminate. So maybe, and I'm not going to throw anything out because I don't want anybody to send me an email tomorrow, but again, we would go through that and say A or B. And maybe we don't do A anymore. So one of the things we did want to throw out there, these are the types of items that certainly we talk about as a leadership team, of ways we could generate additional funds. So you look at the first one, business licensing, and up and through this year, we've decided we don't charge that. We would prefer our businesses licensed and pay than squabble over twenty dollars each. But if we certainly implemented this, we could raise about sixty thousand dollars per year. That would be an every-other-year fee. We could certainly look at legalizing marijuana and the revenue around that.
Mr. Marriott?
Uh-oh.
Go ahead and finish.
Okay. This is all about whether or not the number of dispensaries we would have, and how we would tax them, and how we would fee them. This is just an average, certainly not something that I'm saying we need to do. I'm just telling you, these are options that we have.
Now, do you want to speak to that?
I, I do. So I think I kind of made this comment earlier about, about kind of the difference between, you know, my small business and the way government operates. In my business, we would, we can look at the revenue side. I think this slide is very illustrative of what limited options the, the government has on the revenue side. I look at things like a business license fee, it looks like, well, sixty thousand dollars at a twenty-dollar fee. But a free business license encourages businesses to, who do the sourcing-
Yes.
-to pay taxes. And it removes that impediment to pay taxes. That might not actually be a net sixty thousand dollars annually, it could be a negative ten thousand dollars, you don't know.
Right.
I think, I think that's a dubious one at best. I'm not even going to comment on legalizing marijuana. I would say this, half a million dollars' worth of gross marijuana revenue comes with some costs, too. So probably doesn't, probably didn't do that. A street maintenance fee, which would be a, a fee implemented, I think that sneaks right up on the, the Tabor question of is that a tax or is that a fee? And if, if we were going to entertain something like that, I would suggest we'd be better off to, to, to go to the voters and, and explain our, our side and ask for a tax increase before we would, you know, call it a fee because, because that, because we can't do that. And a lodging tax increase has a limited ability to raise money. So all of these things are, I think, very illustrative of the difficulty of, in recessionary times, government addressing this from the revenue side. It's why I think it's really important, and I think it's great we're having this, this discussion. And thank goodness, we have Mr. Devon and his experience with this type of a situation that as we go forward and plan for recession, with, even if, whether we get there or not, that what we really have to watch out for is the expenditure side. Because that's where the money is, that's where the dollars are, and that's the thing we can do. These are things that are pretty far-fetched and dubious about their ability to really move the needle at all. But on the expenditure side, we can. And so I would encourage us, just encourage us to really focus on that, keep our eyes on that side.
Okay, thank you. So, next steps, we will be bringing to Council, the two thousand and twenty budget process is the second year of a two-year budget. So we're trying to keep that pretty, pretty light. And again, we will be monitoring sales tax and other revenues and, and come back to City Council if any changes are needed.
Okay, any other questions for Council?
I think Mr. Devon would like to add a few items.
Wanted to make a few concluding comments for, for you all to consider. First of all, what Mayor Proton Marriott said is exactly right. Particularly during a recessionary time, the ability for a local government to generate revenue is very limited at best. Secondly, part of the reason why we wanted to show you this recession, recessionary planning model is, first, we know we will be in a recession sometime. It's a, it's not a matter, a matter of it, it's a, it's a matter of when. We don't know, we've been, we keep watching it, and as, as we've looked at our, our revenue picture from this year, we start to see the signs that we, we could be there. And as the mayor said, and my, my fellow city managers as well, have also said that, that their sales taxes is flat. There's a couple of exceptions here and there, but most cities are seeing their, their sales tax being flat. Also, part of the reason for showing this to you is that we had a conversation with all of you about our street maintenance program and where we're at and what we need to do in order to deal with the backlog. As Brian said, we have about a seven mil, seven million dollar a year backlog for the next ten years, about seventy million dollars total. If we were to do that, if we were to address that issue through solely expenditure reductions and not looking at, at any opportunity to increase our revenue or find a dedicated stream of, of income for, for our street maintenance program, these are the kinds of things we would have to consider absent a recession. These are the kinds of reductions we'd have to look at, you know, in terms of, of coming up with that level of funding in order to deal with our street maintenance deficit. So we had that discussion back in April when we presented that, that, the program to you. The reaction was, "You're going to need to look at ways of dealing with this issue without increasing, without going to the voters and asking the voters to increase our revenues." These are the kinds of things that we're going to need to look at. We wanted to make sure that, as you looked at this from a recessionary standpoint, you know, we may, you know, as we, as we go through these options as a leadership team, we may come back to you and say, "These are the kinds of things we're going to need to look at in order to fund that street maintenance program." The other thing I wanted to mention is that you saw that, that ten-year financial plan for our general fund with the deficit shown in the last year. That's kind of the shot across the bow. That's where we understand that, that we have to make changes. As Brian said, that's why we do ten-year financial planning, so that we can, we can get an early warning of, of, of when we're going to see those deficits. And remember, those aren't really true deficits, as in, as if, you know, we're underwater. That's the amount of our fund balance that we're under the, the requirement that the Council set for us in our budget and fiscal policy. So we're still, we're, we're still in the black, if you will, it's just that we've, we've fallen below our, our minimum fund balance. So what, what we will need to do is start to make those, start to make changes in order to address that, that deficit, which means that the likelihood of us approving any new positions, any new major expenditures on the operating side, particularly in the general fund, we, we're still solid in our enterprise fund, and there's reasons to increase there in order to keep up with the regulatory requirements and, and other kinds of things. But in the general fund, the idea that we're going to look at many new positions or new initiatives, new, new expenditure programs, new things along those lines, is very, very, very limited. In fact, at this particular point in time, I don't know that there's any major additional funding that we're going to look at, any additional programs that we're going to look at in the general fund. So that is probably bad news to some of our team members who have proposed new positions, and maybe bad news to some of you if you're, if you're going to suggest something new and exciting that you'd like us to consider out of the general fund. I don't see us being able to afford it at this particular point in time. Now, on the other side of the coin, Brian mentioned the excise tax, the Cadillac tax for, for healthcare. If that does go away, if it's, if the Congress legislates it and, and the President signs a bill to take that away, that will put us back on top with the expenditure savings that we've assumed beginning in two thousand and twenty-two through the rest of the plan. However, you just never know what's really going to happen in Washington. And while I understand that, that, that everybody on both sides of the aisle, if you will, dislikes the excise tax, I, I guess I would have to say I'll believe it when I see it, in terms of them actually taking that away and, and actually getting that done. We, we hope they do, because I don't think anyone likes that excise tax. But, and frankly, in talking to some of our peers across the metro area, most of them have not assumed the, the payment of that metro tax. We conservative budgetally, budget conservatively, and, yeah, right, I knew what I was going to say. Budget conservatively, and so we've assumed it. And if it goes away, then that'll be a benefit to us. But still, it's not going to be a huge benefit where we would want to go out and just, you know, add, add expenditures to our, to our budget. It would still be, I, I think, a conservative budget, no matter what.
Okay, I see no other likes, but wait, Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A week ago, we paid tribute and said nice things to Mr. Daley as he comes to the end of his employment with the city of Arvada. Tonight is the very last meeting workshop, which will be graced with Mr. Daley's presence. Just want to say once again, thank you, best wishes in your retirement.
Well said. We are adjourned.